If you will please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Reverend Hunt?
Good evening, everyone. Let's bow our heads and pray. Jesus, we thank you for this day. Today is the day that you have made. We will choose to rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, we lift up our city. We pray for all of our citizens. We just pray for safety. Lord, we pray for the family of Liz White. Lord, we just pray for comfort and encouragement in their lives. We pray for all the people that are around us that may be struggling with mental health. Lord, we pray that you give us the courage to possibly intervene. And, Lord, we pray for healing in their lives as well too. Lord, we pray for this time as we come together for our city council to be with us and be with us here. We thank you, Jesus.
Amen. Thank you. Michael, if you'll take the roll, please.
All right. Councilman Lloyd?
Here.
Councilman Schlack?
Present.
Councilman Barr?
Here.
Councilman Marcos has asked to be excused. Councilman Valerius?
Here.
Pro Tem Nick?
Here.
Treasurer S. Timer?
Here.
And Mayor McLeod?
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd, second by Mr. Barr. Any corrections or changes?
Um, through the chair?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, if we could, I would like to add, under Organizational Business, the Mayor's Report, number four, a presentation by a drop-in downriver regarding a potential skate park in the city.
Is that all right with the original motion maker and the segunder?
Yes.
If so, we will add that to the agenda. Drop-in Downriver, I am number four under the mayor's portion. Any other corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of August 27th.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. (inaudible) your voice. Second by Mr. Barr. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it's our approved. We now move on to organizational business. First order is a proclamation regarding the National Sea Tracks Think Train Week, which is September 23rd through September 29th. Whereas Sea Tracks Think Train Week is to be held across the United States from September 23rd to 29th, 2024, and whereas 2,192 rail grade crossing collisions resulted in 765 personal injuries and were responsible for 248 fatalities in the United States during 2023, and whereas 1,378 pedestrian trespassing casualties have occurred in the United States resulting in 663 pedestrians being killed and another 715 injured while trespassing on railroad property rights of way during 2023, and whereas education and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways and obeying established traffic laws, will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporations commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National Sea Tracks Think Train Week. Therefore, I, Gail B. McLeod, Mayor, do hereby attest my full support proclaiming September 23rd to 29th, 2024, National Sea Tracks Think Train Week, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Allen Park, Michigan, to be affixed this 10th day of September 2024. Second proclamation is for Constitution Week, which is from September 17th through September 23rd. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Gail B. McLeod, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Allen Park, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Allen Park, Michigan, to be affixed this 10th day of September 2024. And now I move on to the appointment of Anna Fredericks, Melvindale High School student, to be a Student Commissioner on the Beautification Commission. Her term will end on May 5th, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schlack, second by Ms. Nick. Before we get into discussion, I just wanted to indicate that I had sent, as I always do, information out to all the schools where we have Allen Park students, even going as far as Dear Born Divine Child to try and generate interest in the Student Commissioner program. I started by sending a message out in April. I sent another one out in August. Anna replied to the April solicitation, and I was able to reaffirm that she was still interested when the school year started, and I am very pleased to have her volunteering to do this. Are there any other questions from the individuals? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And if you will please come up to be sworn in.
I'm not going to make you repeat after me. You just have to raise your right hand and at the end say, "I swear," "I do," or "I affirm" whatever you feel most comfortable with, okay? Raise your right hand. Do soundly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Allen Park free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of beautification, student commissioner, to the best of your abilities. So help you got.
I do.
All right.
Thank you. I think next up is the addition that we have, and that's the drop-in Downriver.
You guys met a couple of us last month. My name is John O'Hare. I'm the Community Outreach Director for Drop-In Downriver, a nonprofit organization. We would like to facilitate the building of a stadium at our extreme sports park for the entire Downriver area and others to enjoy. By extreme sports, I mean skateboarding, roller-rolling, BMX, roller skating, and scooters. With this new park comes multiple benefits. Guests of all ages will have a place to practice and showcase their skills at any level. Having this park will deter loitering and vandalism on businesses and private properties. Having this park will also provide a place for patrons to exercise. Having this park will get kids out and away from video games and social media. Having this park will bring positive and healthy environment for the youth. Having this park encourages activities and will steer kids away from drugs and alcohol. Having this park will help combat mental issues such as stress. I'm 51 years old and have been skateboarding since I was 11 years old. Yes, 40 years. I have made hundreds of friends and still making more every day with these sports. These friends have been lifelong friends from elementary school to present day who still participate in these sports. Extreme sports demonstrates a strong sense of community. Where other traditional sports often focus solely on competition, we include support and work with everyone together to foster a sense of belonging. Drop-In Downriver is a 503(c) nonprofit organization that started in 2019, and we had backing from the Tony Hawk Foundation and the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation. We were awarded a $250,000 matching grant to rebuild an unsafe skate park in Wyandotte. Unfortunately, the city of Wyandotte was not in full support, and COVID stopped the fundraising completely. In 2021, we reconvened and asked several cities, as well as Wayne County, if we could donate the money that we had already raised to help upkeep of some existing parks in the area. Surprisingly, no one was interested in supporting our youth. In 2024, a new spark emerged. I was at Millward Park for a live music performance set up by Councilman Dan Lloyd showcasing students of his. Dan's enthusiasm and hearing him speak with friends and patrons made it evident that an extreme sports park to be built in Allen -- sorry. Made it evident sports and enrichment of the youth. It was then I asked Mr. Lloyd if he would support an extreme sports park built in Allen Park. Since our first meeting, we have joined together with Parks and Recreation, an enthusiastic city council, the last meeting when we were here, as well as the mayor. You extreme support, it seemed. We would -- with the money raised and dropped in -- Drop-In Downriver during 2019 and 2020, that will go towards this project, as well as we're asking for support of the park to become a reality. We believe the city's approval and support, we can build a city of the art extreme sports that will last for years to come and destination for a location for all to enjoy. Roller blader, skateboarder, skateboarder, skateboarder. We have a few others in the crowd.
Would any council like to ask any questions or make any comments?
Does your company, do you do lessons at all for maybe who -- kids who don't do skateboard but would be interested in it because we're -- if we get this new park?
We've -- that's something that we've talked about in the past, that we'd love to try to do. I'd love to be able to teach somebody. I actually, my nephew over here in Van Tech, my girlfriend's son, I train them, teach them all the time. So Gerald's up at a modern -- if you want.
My name is Gerald Bailey, lifelong Downriver resident. I actually competed professionally from 1999 to 2007, X Games, all that kind of stuff. You may have seen me on TV, NBC, those kinds of things. I still do give lessons. I love teaching the youngsters out in Modern Skate in Serpents Royal Oak. But one of the important things about having folks like us involved is we don't just want to build a great skate park in the City of Allen Park. We want to continue after with the Friends of Allen Park Skate Park and set up programming. Some of the great things they do out in Ann Arbor, we want to use that as a model. They meet monthly. They have, every month, they have an all-girls skate thing where other women come out and help young ladies to get comfortable in the skate park. Different things like that, because it ends up becoming a lifelong passion, and then maybe you get to a point where it's not what you love to do, but you keep those friends that came with it, the lessons that came with it, you know? The continuing to do something just for your satisfaction, to keep getting up and trying again. And the support that we have here in the state of Michigan is different than a lot of other places around the country. Three years ago, we had a gentleman bring a ramp into the Fisher Building in downtown Detroit, and it was to try to carry the kind of lessons and the things that extreme sports folks have learned, because he took his daughter to a skate park for the first time, and she had fallen down, and so many people came to help her. And he said, "Why can't we carry that to other cities, to other organizations, to the government?" You know, we all help everybody. And it's something that has always been there, especially in Michigan. It's different in some other states, but here in Michigan, it's not really very clickish. Everybody cheers for everybody, and it's a cool environment. And we don't have anything like that currently Downriver. Between Toledo and Detroit, there is nothing. And what we'd like to build is that place that people want to stop here in the City of Allen Park and stay overnight, stay in the hotels, go downtown, eat downtown, and experience the city, not just as this awesome place to compete and to perform their extreme sports, but also to see what a great city it is.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say I appreciate everything that you guys are doing. This kind of takes me back a couple of years ago, when we had a young man come and stand right in front of where you guys are at right now and propose the skate park, you know? And it just is nice to, you know, I'm glad you're here. But it, you know, it -- and I, you know, my apologies to you that it's taken this long to finally get things rolling, but the enthusiasm behind something like this, you know, I think is contagious. I think it's something that the more we see and we look at the pictures and hear you talk with the passion that you guys have and the need for something like this, not only in our city, but Downriver area, you know, I think is great. So I appreciate the time and efforts. And thank you, Councilman Lloyd, for what you've done in regards to your conversations with this group of individuals and this organization. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
So just so I understand, the DNR grant, you might be going for a DNR grant, correct?
That is our goal.
Mr. Fulton said usually we have to match those, I think, Mark. Is that what he said?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, I was looking, this is very well put together, so thank you very much. I was just looking at the finance page, so. But thank you very much for all this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will move on to some more mundane things. Our city treasurer?
Come on, numbers are fun.
I like numbers.
Uh, yeah. So just as a reminder to our residents in Allen Park businesses, the deadline to return your tax payments to the treasurer's office has now passed. So starting September 1st, an interest fee will be added to delinquent accounts on the 1st of every month. The final day to pay taxes, summer and winter, to the City of Allen Park is February 28th, 2025. On March 1st, all delinquent summer and winter taxes are turned over to the county for collection. And number two, regarding what was brought up in the work session, the policy of transportation of funds that you had in your packet, I was sharing that with you tonight, a policy that I've written amid, I mean, aimed to better secure the city funds as they're transferred to the bank. The policy has been created in partnership with Allen Park Police Department, with Chief Egan, with the goal of safety and security. The amounts have been left off the copy in your packets for what I thought was obvious reasons, but this was the cash handling policy that we -- or this, as well as the cash handling policy with the Festivities Commission, as part of my ongoing effort to put in place policies and procedures, as well as internal controls to help protect cash receivables by the city and by the treasurer. And if you had any further questions about that, I could take those questions now. And if not, that is all I have.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of the treasurer? Thank you for the updates on the policy. We will now move on to the city administrator's report.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents of Allen Park. Just a few updates. The M-39 Service Drive project between O'Connor and Upland remains delayed with a DTE streetlight issue, but it is possible that they may move past that and get that road reopened in the next few days. Paving for the Pinecrest Drive will begin on Thursday, September 12th, and continue Friday, September 13th. I know the information in your packet says that tomorrow and Thursday, but it is actually going to be Thursday and Friday. Reconstruction of Wick Road, this is going to be between Pelham and the Railroad Tracks, and Herrick between Pelham and the cul-de-sac. It's scheduled to start in the next few days. They've already mobilized equipment to that area for that project to begin. DDA has response -- sponsoring the Maiden Michigan Festival this upcoming Friday, September 20th, and Saturday, September 21st. We have a shred day and starter from collection on Saturday, October 5th. The event will be held in the parking lot behind the -- off of Philomene, behind the Prestige Banquet Hall, Culvers, PNC Bank, and the time will be from 9:00 to 12:00. Also a note, Allen Park Today Magazine will be coming out. I just saw the version today. It's ready to go to print and be ready for delivery, I believe, starting next Monday, Tuesday. And for the first time, we have the Melvindale North Allen Park Public Schools are involved.
Nice.
So we're trying to get them involved more. They're just basically going to have a letter from their superintendent. It was kind of their welcoming letter. And also, they did a project back, I hate to tell everybody what the magazine's going to be about, but they did a project at the Ecorse Creek Cleanup back in the springtime. So we thought it was kind of pertinent on that information. Now just try to get them more involved, like Allen Park Public Schools is heavily involved in that. So I think it's going to be a nice addition that you'll really enjoy reading again. And then just I want to congratulate the following employees that reached milestone in years of service. Travis Tomy with the Fire Department reached five years yesterday, September 9th, and Chief Egan, Police Chief, reached 25 years yesterday, also September 9th.
Very nice. May I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report, please? Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We now move on to the public comment section. You are restricted to four minutes. All we ask is that you give your name and the street on which you live. Please do not provide your full address. The only other thing we ask is that you keep your comments civil.
There we go, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it's been a long time since I've been here. And I don't like having to come here. My name is Jennifer Cod. I'm a 45-year-plus resident.
And what street, please?
Thomas Avenue.
Thomas, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Forty-five-plus-year resident, taxpayer, and voter. DTE has damaged my property. I've been fighting with them for months on this, and now I've been ghosted. I had to allow DTE to come to install the new meter. My old one was fine. They billed me just fine. There was no problem with that. They got all their money. They've had all their money for the last 18 years that I've been on Thomas Avenue. They've taken chunks out of city property as well. I emailed some of you. I was able to get some email addresses. I know it was kind of late. I wasn't sure. I don't have time to do this. I shouldn't have to do it. I didn't hire them. I have text messages from them that I reported at the time. They started in October of last year. Then it got cold, and they said, "Well, we're going to take care of the repairs in the fall." Come around April, the thaw comes. They come out. They did some piecemeal work, but they damaged other property. The type of cement that I had at my house, I've now replaced the cement because it was a trip hazard. It looked horrible. It was damaged. They told me eventually the spray paint from in front of my house was going to wash off the cement. I've been through three supervisors with DTE. I didn't hire them. I didn't issue the permit for them. And I'm at my wit's end of dealing with them. And it doesn't matter anyway because they've ghosted me. So, but I have like text messages from them where the -- he had told me that he was going to fix my approach in the sidewalk and take care of all the repairs, and it's not been done. And now some of the repairs I see, like where they did the sidewalk on it, they did like this bubble over because they damaged the next part of the sidewalk. I had older sidewalk. It was more like, not like the fine sanded cement, but more like the rock cement. So when you cut it, the piece of rocks come out, and they weren't like the small pebble rock, you know? But I keep my property, you know, my place is tight and clean. And I'm, you know, I'm a resident here. I take pride of living in Allen Park. You know, I haven't seen a street sweeper in -- forever, but it doesn't matter because I go out there and I street sweep it. I go out there and I power wash in front of my house and street. I do that as being a proud citizen of Allen Park. So I sent some email pictures to you. You probably didn't get them till late. I do have this. If I could pass this around?
You'll give it to the clerk and take care of that. I assume that you can provide your address.
It's in the email. I don't have it on there. I can write it on there. But I mean, just to show you some of the things that they were okay with doing to my property, and that's my investment. You know, that's my home. And I didn't buy this home at, you know, a foreclosure price years ago. I paid top dollar because I wanted to be by that school. I wanted to be in Allen Park. I wanted to be by my family. I wanted to be in a good community. And I take pride of how this city looks. And everybody here should too. But I can't do anything more with them. And, you know, I've been to the building department. They say DPW takes care of it. DPW, they don't, you know, they can't make them do anything. Well, yeah, you guys issue the permits. I have replaced the cement. And I told DTE at the time, I said, "You know what? Some of this is going to need replacing because it's going to keep on breaking and getting messed up. I'll pay for four pads. You pay for the four pads." But they, I have text messages that they would take care of the approach, and nothing's done. And now we're getting ready to come on to pond winter. They've done the same thing to other residents here in the city as well, and it's not the right thing to do. So I need somebody to step up from the city here now. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cod, can you see Tom Marie with Ms. Cod?
I've talked to Mr. Maria.
Can you give him the, can you send the email to him so we can get, so I can get a copy of it?
Thank you.
Edward Sparker, Meyer Avenue. City manager alluded to it earlier that September 20th and 21st is the Maiden Michigan. I'm up here. My organization, the Allen Park Citizens, Civic Citizens Fund, APCCF, we're going to be running the Beer Tent both days on Friday and Saturday. And the proceeds, 50% of the net proceeds generated from the sales for that weekend are going to be a donation going back to the Allen Park Civic Citizens Fund. For those that don't know who we are and what we do, if you visit any of the parks, the Dog Way stations, that was all from, generated from funds from benefits to purchase those. If you visit our library, the Storyboard Walk that goes around the entire perimeter of the library, that is compliments of the APCCF. So we really try to put everything back into the community. It's about the Parks and Rec. It's about the library, and anywhere else where we can feel that we can fit in. Also, we could use some volunteers. We could use some volunteers for the shifts at the Beer Tent. I can be reached on the Allen, or the Allen Park Citizens Civic Fund website via my email address, or anybody that would like to talk to me after the meeting. I'll be hanging around. But let's make this Maiden Michigan a great one. It's the last big event in our community of the year. Let's take it out in grand fashion. Go Allen Park!
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark Bailey, residents on Philomene, but I reside on Park Avenue. I just want to let you know that the Allen Park Elks will be hosting the 36th Pumpkin Patch, and I want to bring some things to your attention. I don't use a teleprompter. I'm not a good public speaker, but we'll be having the function for the special needs party in the Allen Park Elks on Halloween night, and it'll be the 36th year. And 35 or 36 years ago, the DDA can redid Park Avenue with blue poles, and were convenient enough to put power boxes on the 42 trees on Park Avenue that I and some volunteers decorated for decades and made it appealing. I had a lot of good comments, a few negative. Then the city reduced the 42 trees to 17 trees. I continued to decorate those trees, Valentine's Day, St. Patrick's Day, Easter, Christmas, Halloween. For decades, I've done that. Today, I'll tell you what happened today, but we, they, the city decided, whoever it is, the DDA, to switch the blue poles out for black poles, and I'm not an engineer, for reasonings that we were never told. They never consulted the business owners it was done. So we have the black poles. I think it was close to a million dollars. And today, the gentlemen with their sazas were out there cutting the power boxes to the remaining 17 trees. So those won't be lit up anymore. But your candy canes and your little pine trees that he's, they put up, I guess they'll be there, but the homecoming floats that I get for Halloween will not be lit up because there's no power. And I've heard that the street fair had to use generators. I've heard that the Maiden Michigan is going to have to use generators because it wasn't done accordance to have things. So Halloween, where we've had Showmobile there with power running simply from the power boxes or the blue poles over to their, they only needed a generator for that, too. So 36 years I've been in charge of the Halloween program for the special needs. I've been at the shoe store for 42 and a half years. Been decorating Park Avenue for close to that, and now I get shitfaced. Excuse me. That's all I have to say. Thank you. I appreciate this city, but I don't appreciate what's happened.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. Thank you, Mark Bailey, for all those, all the time that you have put into this city for free. Sorry you wasn't at the last meeting. I know you missed me. I did watch the meeting. It looked terrible. So here's what I'm going to say. Every one of you up here, except for Mark, and nothing against you, Mark, except for Mr. Joe Corvier, are elected officials, elected by the citizens. So I'm going to ask you all to start respecting each other. Just respect each other. You're not up here to go ahead and all vote and get a, be a rubber stamp. That's not what your job is. Your job is to look out for the citizens. So my time is gone, so I've got a couple of things to bring up. I heard at the last meeting about how great, nothing against the city, but I'm going to tell you the reason why the city's in the position it is. It's because us citizens went ahead in 2013, passed a 6.75% police fire millage. We made it permanent in 2020. It generates $6,500,000. In the year 2020, we made permanent a 1.9 street millage that generates 1.9 million dollars. That does not come out of nothing else. It also freed up all that money for the budget. So I think we have done an excellent job. The citizens have. And us citizens need to be brought up more than some other individuals, that we are the ones, the reason why our city's in the position it is. But the position where the city is now is really something. I am for the police, and I'm for the fire. I am for the, for getting the Fire Department redone. I have not been there. I will be going there, probably tomorrow, and I think I'm going to see it. But I'm going to tell you what. I saw, I remembered how the police department looked. That was terrible. So I heard that we're going to go ahead and redo the work for $8 million, 8.5 million. No idea how much the interest is going to be, based on the interest is coming down, like you said, Mark, okay? But that's $8 million. We are $9 million unfunded pension plan that is not really brought up. And nothing against the pensioners. This is something that we are done, okay? So right now, when I brought up that we were $59 million in the hole before, we are now 87 million in the hole. But you turn around and you put the pension fund in, is it, we're at $96,264,000 in the hole. So when some of you try to save us money, thank you. But we can't penny pinch. I understand that. And yes, a lot of grant money has been brought in. But I will say this. When we bring the grant money in, we can't allow it to be blown. It needs to be actually spent wisely and make sure it's wisely. So with that said, I want to thank you very much. Oh, I know my time's up. But I was up at, I was up at, I was up north, and we went ahead and we went to St. Ignis. Fantabulous. $110 at a Mont Paul little motel instead of $200 at some other restaurant, I mean, other places. They charged us $5.37 for city taxes. Something I've been trying to do for here, too. Have a great day. Thank you very much. I know I was missed.
Hi. Mary Jane Kittle, Hamford Street. First, I want to say if I start choking, please ignore me for a minute. My sinuses are dripping bad. I would like to speak on what happened at the last meeting. Sadly, it turned into a bullying by some, a stall by a councilwoman, and I believe an illegal text sent to another to get him to leave the school. And to come to the meeting, he was excused from and had no right to take a seat in the participation because of it. All this because an item was presented and did not have the support to move forward. Instead of doing the proper procedures, Mr. Mizzi's passwords came to light, where he had stated in effect the procedures. There are, there are procedures, but not always followed. What a shame. You all need to understand something. We, the residents, voted you in to represent us and to do right by us in the city. We expect you to do, we expect you to not believe all that is said to you, but to research and verify. We expect you to respect each other. We expect you to understand that not everyone's opinion will be the same at times, and it's okay. That is what we, that is what we have you seated there for, to be the checks and balances, not to be the yes man. If a yes man is what we needed or wanted, we wouldn't need, we wouldn't need any of you. We would just have the city run with its employees and the manager. Again, all the checks and balances of the system, again, you are the checks and balances of the system. We need you all to ask the questions, get the answers, and do the research, and not to just believe what is being told to you. We need you to not look at this as a part-time position because it is not in any way, and start looking at it as an honor to be seated there instead. We need you to all stop thinking because someone doesn't agree with you, your beliefs and opinions, it doesn't mean that they are wrong or against you, because they're not. It's just their opinion. We need you all to see that it is what, and again, keeps us checks and balances, keeps us honest and in the best interest of the city. We do not to take offense anymore and become bullies because you do not like their different opinions. We do not need you to manipulate either. We need you all to do your best and work together as a whole. You have a lot of people looking at you who are learning what it is to work as a team and not as a dictator. You all have the power to make a difference, and you all have the power to this story. I ask that this, on us against them attitude, some of you had to please stop. It's our differences that enables us to learn from each other. It's our differences that allows us to see things we may never see again. It embraces these differences that allow us to grow stronger and in the right direction. So I'm asking, with this unbecoming behavior, stop. You all started accepting your differences, accepting you are not, not just believe what you are told, but to actually do the work and research, ask questions, and come to a conclusion yourself. If you believe you can't do this, then I ask that you step down because there is no margin for error when it comes to representing the good of this city and us residents. Thank you very much.
There's no one else coming up. We'll close the public comment section and move on to the consent agenda, which this evening consists of claims and accounts and the payroll report. Motion, please.
Motion. Second, Mayor.
Valerius and Lloyd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. They are approved. Resolution. Resolution one is to renew the Munitrix Analytics Performance Software for a three-year contract from 2024 to 2027 at a total cost of $11,874, which is $3,958 per year with funds from account 10117282300. Motion.
Motion.
Mine is Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr.
Let me through the chair. The Munitrix Analytics Performance Software is provided to the residents for more transparency. We've been using this product since 2017. It actually started with a state grant that they, they covered half the cost. Interesting, though, the cost of the, has come down so much now that it's not much more than what we were actually paying when we were paying half of it with the grant from the state of Michigan. This allows the residents to go in and compare the Allen Park's financial data to other municipalities. It also offers an online forum to view the traffic, crime, and other statistical data. It is pretty robust on what different things it'll do. And we've, these are the versions that we have available for the residents. It's a dashboard, city comparison, budget builder, debt manager, and the annual CV TRS state compliance tool. I did include, if you, the back of the presentation is what's on our website. If you, they were just screenshots so you can actually see that. If you go into the finance area, you can go through there and do some comparisons and so forth, and some other information based on the Munitrix. So they've offered us a three-year contract. It is at $3,958. It'll save, over the three years, $907 for the term of the contract. That's the one, I recommend a three-year contract.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Resolution two is to award the installation of a new flagpole at the Historical Museum as part of the American Bloom and Canadian National Rail Echo Connections from the Ground Up Grant to Rocket Enterprise in the amount of $2,253.50 with funds from account 101172955803. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd.
Let me through the chair. This is part of the $25,000 grant that we did receive from American Bloom and Canadian National Railroad through their program, looking to replace the flagpole. It'll be a new flagpole, new, slightly different location. It moves to be some more centered in between the new sidewalk and the existing driveway. It'll include a upgrade to a clear, inundiced finish and adding the fight of that prevention locking system. This is one of those that we, if you tried to use this other one, we probably could. It'll come down to, everybody's going to see nice new landscaping. We're working on the window portion of the grant. We've got the paint stripped off. We've got the porches built. The only thing that people will notice is the flagpole. It's just, it's how it goes. It's like doing a project at home, and you sit there and wonder, "Why didn't I just do this in the first place?" So that's why I bring this forward, $2,253.50, and that includes the, all the locking systems and disposal of the existing flagpole.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Yes, Mayor, I would just like to thank Mark for providing all this information because at first I was not for the new flagpole. But after looking over all this information, I do understand what our city administrator was talking about. So thank you, Mark.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Kind of just as an addendum, when you're talking about doing things at home, just as sure as, if we wouldn't have done something to it about a year later, we're probably fallen down, right? Resolution three, to approve the appointment of Lieutenant Aaron Phelps to the position of Police Chief, which will be effective Monday, October 7, 2024, at 7:00 a.m., contingent upon reaching a mutual agreement of a Police Chief employment agreement. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Valerius. Second by Mr. Barr. As all of you have received the memo, and according to the police contract, the position of Police Chief was posted in the Police Department on August 9th. Of the four individuals eligible to apply, two applied and were interviewed. The eligibility, interview, and appointment process related to the appointment of Police Chief is outlined in the most recent collective bargaining agreement, which states in part that the mayor and city administrator will act as the oral board and will recommend appointment. Based on the oral interview, it is a recommendation of myself and the city administrator that Aaron Phelps be appointed to the position of Police Chief effective 7:00 a.m., Monday, October 7, 2024, contingent upon reaching a mutual agreement of a Police Chief employment agreement. Aaron has over 25 years of experience and is a 2020 graduate of the Police School of Staff in Command, executive leadership. He has worked in numerous capacities during his career, from patrol to administrative duties, and has been involved with the accreditation process. We believe that his approach to using technology and recognizing the skills of the department's personnel will continue to provide the department with strong leadership. I thank you for consideration of this matter. And I will say that the two candidates that we had were excellent candidates, and they both brought a lot to the table. So this was not a very, very easy decision. May I have a motion? I have a motion. Any comments or questions from the council, please? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. The motion is carried. It's Mr. Phelps. Would you like to come up so that we can?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, elected officials. I do appreciate this. I'm going to be there for you and the citizens. My phone indoors always open. Email's the best route. But it's a big job. I'm going to give it 110, give it my all. The citizens are the ones who matter the most, and we are there for them. So if you have a problem, you won't always get the answer you want, but I will guide you through your problem, explain it to you if I can't help you fix it. There's certain things our hands are tied on, but I'll explain to you. but I'll explain to you what we can and cannot do, but hopefully we can resolve your problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our last resolution is to accept the long-term maintenance of stormwater management system with Barnes Development LLC at 1,000 Enterprise Drive, which is by Bell Tire. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick.
Let me through the chair. This development is at the end of Enterprise Drive where it turns, at Melvindale, turns into South Auburn across the tracks. It's actually the old Frito-Lay location, if you're familiar with that from back in the day. And just a, this is the standard agreement required to, on projects like this, we're involving the stormwater management process.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. We will now come to the elected officials' comments. And this evening, we start with Ms. Nick.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Just a couple things. The beautification, I'm not sure if it was mentioned earlier or not. That's gonna be this Saturday, September 4th, or September 14th, from 10 to 12. And they're gonna clean out Park Avenue, and they're meeting where the farmer's market is there on Park. Also, on Friday, September 13th, the Allen Park High School is asking that everybody wear bright orange in the memory of Liz White. They'll be playing at the Allen Park Football Game against Woodhaven. So in her memory, that was her favorite color, was bright orange. So if you could, if you're going to the game Friday, please wear bright orange in her memory. Also, to homecoming, in Allen Park High School, it's gonna be September 20th. They're playing Lincoln Park. Back in my day, which was a long time ago, it was a big rival. I don't know how it is now. Dan, no? Big rival, okay. Okay. And then, and that's September 20th, and then Military Night is right after that. I know my dad used to like to go to that. He was in the Army. That's the 27th. So when you're leaving this evening, if you guys would please, when you go out, take a look to your right, the showcase at the Historical Commission. They've changed it up, so it's back to school. So I know some of you students out there won't remember, but we used to carry lunchboxes, those metal lunchboxes. So they have a lot of old memorabilia from back in the day going to school. And Mark Bailey, I do appreciate everything you've done for this city. Are we still picking up pumpkins? I know I've done that with you for a long time. Okay? All right, I'll take space with you. So, and that's all I have, and good night, everyone.
Thank you. Next was Mr. Valerius.
First, I wanna start with congratulations again to Travis Tomy for his five years of service in the Fire Department, and Chief Chris Egan for his 25 years of service in the Police Department. I also wanna thank, again, Dropin Downriver for taking the time to come out and present the skate park project to council this evening. I wanna kind of focus on more or less things tomorrow than tonight. As we know, 23 years ago tomorrow, on September 11th, all of our lives and the lives of our children, and our children's children, basically changed forever. 2,977 people were killed in New York City, Washington DC, and outside Shanksville, Pennsylvania. 2,753 people were killed at the World Trade Center. 343 New York City firefighters died in the initial attacks and subsequent collapse of the World Trade Center towers. 23 New York City police officers died that day. 37 Port Authority officers died that day. The youngest victim was age two. The oldest victim was age 85. 184 people were killed when hijacked American Airlines Flight 77 crashed into the Pentagon. And 40 passengers and crew were killed when United Flight 93 crashed in a field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. These numbers are staggering and forever etched, not only in stone and marble memorials, but in our hearts, minds, and souls. September 11th will forever be remembered as a tragic day. But the days and weeks that followed this cowardice act of terrorism should not be forgotten. We witnessed a nation in mourning come together. We saw neighbors talk to neighbors, fly American flags, and unite in patriotism. It was simply incredible. Yet, it did not last. It is sad, really, that the experience we shared following such a tragic event could not, and has not, become part of our daily lives. It should not take an event like September 11th to promote patriotism and pride in being an American. It should not take an event like September 11th to be a good neighbor, practice random acts of kindness every day, and to simply be a good person with a focus on others and to do what is right, what is just. Almost every child currently in schools, grades K through 12, wasn't even alive when September 11th, 2001 occurred. My son is only one years old. As a teacher, I plan on teaching my students tomorrow and in the days to come about 9/11, telling them what I personally went through and showing, and sharing with them what I went through on that day and my thoughts following that tragic event. We should not, we must not, wait until September 11th each year to remember the events and the aftermath of that day. We must never forget, and we must strive to be better people, better dads, moms, sons, daughters, brothers, sisters, friends, neighbors, workers, teachers, and yes, council members. Sandy Dahl, the wife of pilot Jason Dahl of Flight 93 that crashed into a field in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, after the passengers on that flight fought back against the armed terrorist hijackers and broke into the cockpit, said, "If we learn nothing from this tragedy, we learn that life is short, and there is no time to hate." Tomorrow, please, take a moment, a few minutes, be silent, close your eyes. Remember that day and the days and weeks that followed. We must never forget. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Matt. Um, Mr. Barr.
Matt, you just said everything that I had written. It was beautiful. I'm only gonna say, where were you? This goes out to everybody. Is it going to be a day that is going to be remembered forever in my heart? Some of us do not know anybody that was involved directly with the events. Some of us do indirectly. Some of us do directly know people that was involved. Just like what Councilman Valera said, take a moment, please, and remember. That's all I'm gonna say on that. Congratulations to the anniversaries. And to Chief, Chief Egan, I know he's not here, but congratulations. To, I don't know how to put this, but elect, chief elect. Phelps, congratulations. I'm gonna have to notify your brother that he needs to start stepping up his game again, because I remember when both of you became lieutenants. Chief Phelps, his brother is a firefighter in Paulding County, Georgia. And it's kind of an interesting thing how I met him because of a business that I used to own. It was like Allen Park. So, on that, I'm basically, other things that have been said, both in the public comment and so far here up on the dais, I've actually had a lot of, all that written out. So, I yield.
Thank you, Gerald. Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, your words, they hit home. I definitely remember where I was. I think about what you said when you talk about school-aged children. I look at my children, that I would eventually have to teach them about that moment, where their father was, and where their other family members were. It forever changed me. It was the catalyst that led me to eventually join the military and so many other things that I've done in my life. I can't say it any better than you did, so thank you for those words. To future Chief Phelps, congratulations. Speak a little more about that once you officially get your badge pinned on you, but I just, I definitely had to reach out and say that. I also wanna say to everyone that came up today, I took some notes. Thank you for always coming up and sharing. That's what we're here for, so I definitely encourage you to keep doing so, and especially hear about the troubles that we've had with DTE. I know that's something that my colleagues and I have, have had a lot of conversations about over the years, and will continue to have, rest assured. And finally, I'll just end it here. I wanna embarrass my wife a little bit, that this Thursday will be our ninth wedding anniversary. So happy anniversary, Bridget. And with that, I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
Again, very appreciative of Councilman Valerius's words. I think it's kind of the de facto council bard. Spent a lot of times crafting that. And as an educator, I know it's been bizarre for me, I'm sure it has been for you, as that memory has dwindled with our students. When I started, they were very, very young when it happened, and they had very early memories. And then over time, now, now I'm teaching it as, as history, which is an interest. It's a, it's been a surreal experience. Surreal experience is something that's been so impactful on us. Ms. Cott, I apologize. I saw your emails come through like right as I was coming in here. But I, I know the bureaucratic hellscape that it is to deal with DTE. I think that everybody in this room probably does. One time, their government affairs person came in here, and I thought that she was gonna get rotten tomatoes hurled at her on her way out the door. Yeah, it's, it might be, it might be helpful. And I know you mentioned that you, you've worked with, with Mr. Murray and some other people. Yeah, sure. But we, but we, if you get that to him, I know that they have been responsive to us in the past. Actually, Mr. McGustin came to with, with an issue with replacing lawns a couple of years ago. And eventually, it took some time, but we were able to resolve that. So again, I just echo what Mr. Kibbe said. If you get that email to him or to Mr. Murray, and then we, they have some point people that they have to reach out with, that, you know, it's sometimes they're a little bit more responsive to the city than they are to individual citizens. So I appreciate you bringing that concern to us. I mean, that's one of those things that we talk about until you bring things up to us, that that's how we, that's how we know, so. Oh, no.
If we could, if we could hold the exchange shot after, please.
But thank you, and again, I, I think that they'll, hopefully they'll be able to resolve it to your satisfaction. I want, again, another big thanks to Dropin Downriver. They've been doing a lot of work, and it's just starting. We still have a lot of work to go. Big shout out to Luke O'Donnell, correct? No, dang it. Wensel, Luke Wensel, there it is. Ah, okay, Luke, I knew it was Luke. So Luke Wensel, when he came up here, I believe he was in seventh or eighth grade. And I remember I had to ask him what year in high school he was. He's like, no, I'm just an eighth grader. He spoke with such eloquence about the importance and the impactfulness of this. And it's something that we even had conversations, you know, the years following in the halls, but just kind of took a little extra stark, a little extra oomph. And I've mentioned it just in passing to a couple of kids in the school, and kids are already, are super excited about it. I think that this is, it is a project that is way overdue. And as Gerald said there, between Detroit and Toledo, like, you know, that's, that's a desert. So we could kind of put ourselves on the map with that. So I'm, I'm very excited for that. To Mr. Bailey, I, I have grown to look forward to the times when you start coming up and talk to us about Halloween. It's, there you are. It, it's, my five years up here, you know, around September, it's like clockwork, we start to have it. I am, I'm very apologetic that, that this year has been sour for you. I, I know that it's frustrating, and I know that there's been other hurdles as far as the street fair and other things like that. I have no doubt, it might not be this year, but we will find a long-term solution to it. We have some incredibly, incredibly intelligent, hardworking people that make sure that we'll get that solved. And so it might not be this year, it might be generators this year, but long-term, we will find a solution for that. So thank you for all that you do for the city. I apologize that you've, that that, that is, that you've had to experience that. So thank you, and I appreciate you very much. With that.
You yield?
I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Astheimer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks to the members of council for your remarks. Rather than repeat, I'll simply say that I share in your remarks and comments and appreciate your thoughtfulness. That being said, a few comments of my own. I wanna start by thanking those who participate in the Adopt a Flower Bed program through our Beautification Commission. Those flower beds this year have been amazing. And I know it's been without some help that we've had in the past with the city watering some of those plants. So I just wanna say, those folks that have done that have done an outstanding job this year. As I'm taking my daughter to the middle school, driving down Wick, in particular, Ms. Yef, help me, is it the Lollows? Or is that how they pronounce their name? Yeah, that, that one is, is so big and beautiful. But again, thanks to Beautification Commission and those participants who take care of those flower beds to enhance our city at their own expenditure. And thanks to Communication Commission for offering that program. Due to a family obligation, I was unable to attend the last meeting. So regarding the now vacant office of the Finance Director, while I know our city administrator is working diligently, I know we have postings to fill that position. As the treasurer, the checks and balances of that department, I'll be honest with you, I am concerned. Concerned about the negative implications and consequences we are discovering on a daily basis and the issues this vacancy has brought to the Finance Department. However, on a positive note, through the expertise and dedication of city employees, such as Jackie Baxter and Kristin Zotter, just to name a few, who've gone above and beyond to help as we all work together as a team to cover some of the duties of that position until a new Finance Director is hired. So thanks to those employees. And with that, I, I just wanna remind you, council, that, and most importantly, that I want you to know that I stand ready as your treasurer to do anything and everything I can do to assist the city and the residents as we work through that challenge together. And with that, thank you all for coming out tonight, and God bless you.
Thank you. Mr. Mizzi.
Everyone else is long-winded. I join them. A few weeks ago, one of our longtime citizens, the family-owned Dunlevy's Bar, Brian Dunlevy had passed away, and I, I just wanted, I know by now with social media, everybody knows. But everybody knows the Dunlevys because of the bar, but what most people don't know is Mary Ann Dunlevy, his mother, was the longest full-time city employee in Allen Park that I've found so far. I wanna say over 42 years. She started back before it was even a city, and then she literally left like less than a year before I came in. And I, I came in '94, so she left, or '95, she came in '94, so. It's just crazy, but, so don't just remember them as bar owners. They've been dedicated to the city, providing beverages, yes, but also serving the citizens, so. With that, I also wanna bring up another retiree. Her name's Kim Kochivar. She started working here in 1977, and I believe the age of 20. And they just She started working here in 1977, and I believe the age of 20, and they just took her off life support today. But she was what was called a radio alarm operator. And she's so, she started at the Fire Department, and then ended off anyone who called 911 from like when it started to 2005, probably spoke to Kimmy, so she was a dispatcher. And you want to talk about someone with the best stories ever? I mean, cops, you got great stories, but Kimmys are better, I'm sorry, but she, she is not expected to go much longer, but I just wanted to let anyone that knows her, that we are sorry, and please keep her in your prayers. I'm not going to end on a bad note, though, and a negative note, but I do have to bring up Aaron. Your grandmother would be so proud. When my mother came to America, ever since she came, she was known for two things, playing bingo and working at the volunteering at the Red Cross. Well, about 40 of those years was playing bingo with Aaron and Aaron's grandmother and then with your mom, so I know that your grandmother, my mom, would be so proud right now, because I remember when you came from Detroit Police Department, and that was like the best news the family had ever heard, so Aaron, congratulations. I got to kick into something here. Anyone see the Allen Park Football Game? They won by one point in overtime, so great job, Jags. But I want to end with two problems here, and you could go several meetings, and it seems the one company name that always comes up is DTE. There's an old saying, you can't fight City Hall, well, you can't fight DTE. City Hall, you could get rid of us. DTE, they're just going to keep going. Whatever you guys could do, please do it. I was shocked at how well, after we passed the ordinance, they actually used quality sod when they replaced not just through, or seed, not just let crabgrass and weeds grow. So whatever you can do, Ms. Cott, I know, you fight your, she won't leave you alone, by the way. And she won't leave DTE alone, she's like her dad. God bless him. But please, anything you could do for DTE, for these people, that's what you need to do. Also, I'm just going to say this about the election, go to Michigan.gov/vote, tons of information, I'm going to start going nuts on it at the next meeting, right before the absentee ballots go out, just to make sure everybody's informed. Thank you all for coming out, God bless you, and good night.
Thank you, Mike. He's not here, but I do want to mention that before our next meeting, Mr. Marcos is going to have a birthday on September 22nd, so send him an email, wish him a happy birthday. I was shocked about Kim. I'm not going to tell you I was a good friend of hers, but I do know her through some very good friends of mine, and as a matter of fact, I will contact them after this meeting because I saw she suffered, she had a birthday recently, and so this was just out of the blue. It's funny listening to people talking about 9/11, those of us who were around when it happened, think that it's very familiar to everyone, but then to hear the teachers say, you know, they have students that now it's history, and it's one of those things you'll never forget. And I know I've told this story, but my mother was having cataract surgery, and I was waiting for her to come out, and I was sitting in the lobby of the Surgery Center, and the TV was on, and I saw the building, and I thought, oh my gosh, the pilot had a heart attack, and something really, you know, accidental happened. Then they told me that she was ready to come out, and I got the car, and I turned on the radio, and they said a second plane had hit, and then I knew it wasn't an accident. And I don't know anybody directly involved, but I do know that a man that I worked with at GM took it upon himself to go to New York and help. He died too young of cancer, which I'm sure was attributable. So in some way, I, we were all touched by that day, and we must keep it very fresh in everyone's minds, because Matt's right. I got home and the first thing I did was make sure our flag was up, and I just felt so many things, and you remember. Very happy for some of the things that are going on with our employees. Very pleased to be having Lieutenant Phelps coming in as our police chief. Very pleased that we are moving forward on a number of projects. Very pleased that we continue to have employees who are dedicated and hardworking and always looking for the best ways to do things. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion. Motion by?
Second.
Dueling motions, Mr. Barr and Ms. Nick, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned at 7:16 p.m. Everyone have a good evening.